The Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 6, PL 1976, C 2 3 1, S 1 amended, 2006, C 70, S 2. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the new coaster on January 27, 2023 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 27, 2003. I'm gonna read our mission statement. "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse and evolving global society." Roll call. Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lysinski?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Right.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Vice President Grillo?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, let's do the flag symbol. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Great. Now, I know that it says on the agenda, motion to go into executive caucus, I'd like to make a motion to amend that. The next agenda item to be the vacancy interviews. There was a vacancy that took place back in December, and we gave adequate notice for folks to apply. We received applications from five individuals. One has withdrawn her application candidacy, Ms. Cook, and so we notified the other four candidates to come to the meeting today because we've got a couple of questions to ask them. So, the way we're going to do this, I'll just, I'm just gonna go over the format of the...
Mr. Grillo, I have a question.
Yeah?
Just so the audience knows, we did receive an email from Ms. Cook, but her concern was that today at 2:36, that she had not been notified about what time she was to be here today, if it was today, and she also stated that she heard somebody was already chosen. She withdrew her name. And then Mr. Grillo followed up and did tell the board that he called the other candidates at 3 o'clock to be here tonight, and he didn't reach out to Ms. Cook, but I don't know if, I don't think there was adequate notice for people to be here. And the other question I had is that the board was not asked to supply questions for the candidates. We did get an email about some, you know, proposed questions from school boards, but we were not notified about submitting questions to the board president and having a selection of a number of questions. We usually have a question for each board member to ask, so I just wanted to comment on that. My own opinion is I think we should wait to interview because they didn't get adequate notice and Ms. Cook was not notified.
Well, I can answer to some of that, and then I can ask Mr. Weiss for the process of vacancy interviews. But actually, an email was sent out a week ago, it was sent out by the board president saying exactly the format for filling this board vacancy. Literally what I was just about to explain. Mr. Weiss, can you give me a bit of information on the board, how the board vacancy, the format is to be filled?
Sure.
Can I say something, Mr. Grillo? I think that adequate notice was given. We said at the reorganization meeting that these interviews would take place at this meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Grillo, to answer your question. The law and statutes actually do not provide a process by which board vacancies are to be filled, and in the absence of any law, code, or statute on the matter, the board's process for filling a vacancy is essentially, the board decides and designs the process by which interviews are going to happen, et cetera. Arguably, no interviews are needed and the board could just pick names out of a hat. It's kind of that loosey-goosey in terms of there's no statutory requirements that anything be done. With that being said, typically, boards will invite people to submit their names for consideration. There are typically public interviews that happen at a board meeting, and then typically, boards will, after the public interviews, boards will retire to executive session to consider the candidates, after which they'll come out from executive session and appoint the board member by way of a formal vote, and then that new board member is sworn in. So that's typically how the process works, again, not outlined or required by law or statute, but more or less the way that things typically work amongst boards in New Jersey.
So, we sent out the proposed questions for board candidates last week, and we can probably start with the different candidates that we have. I think just going, oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Will each board member be offered a time where we could ask questions, or is it just as I was told that only one board member would ask questions of all of the candidates? Will each of us have an opportunity to participate? And furthermore, I don't know who decided that it would be one person to ask all the questions because I'm part of the board, and I wasn't apprised of that.
You have to speak to the board president on that, but I have no problem if you want to read these questions, if you want to have a bit of time to ask a follow-up. Here's the thing, we need to be brief on this. We've got a long schedule today, and we want this to be timely and effective and have the same questions for each candidate. I would ask if, as one candidate comes up to answer the questions, the other candidates, if they could please leave the room, that way it's fair, you know, it's a little fair to have that since we're gonna be asking the same questions to each of them.
You know, Mr. Grillo, we shouldn't be talking about the process tonight. We should have already talked about it prior to this, you know, Ms. Ricks asking those questions. I don't even know what role each of us are playing tonight. It wasn't communicated to any of us, and we hadn't discussed it.
Hold on. And speaking in a matter of time. Mr. Grillo, as you said, in a matter of time, and we're trying to make it brief, I feel as though they all should be present and answer the question back to back to back, just like a forum.
Yep.
Like how we did during the campaign, for speaking in a sense of time.
Okay.
So we all can...
Sure. And, you know, just for the sake of transparency, if, I'm sorry, did you have something to say? For the sake of transparency, if you wanted to ask follow-up questions, I think that, you know, that makes sense.
Not only follow-up questions, we have four questions here, and we are to ask each candidate, as I understand it, the same questions. My concern was, who decided that it would be one board member to ask all the questions?
We didn't decide that. If you wanted to, you can...
Because as a board member, I was not made aware of this process, and I'm big on processes.
Right. Yeah, I mean, this was emailed last week, but again, we could, yeah, Ms. Glassman.
I honestly do not know why we are arguing about this. This email was sent out by Mr. Saunders on January 22nd. It talked about the format, it talked about the questions, and the last line of his email, "If you have any questions or comments, please send them to me, note it later than end of business Tuesday via email."
And how do you know we didn't? Still, as a board member, I like to ask my own question. I don't want anyone speaking for me.
And like you said, if, we'll allow some time for follow-up questions. Well, your own questions, right.
I want to ask my own question from this list here.
Oh, from this list?
I don't know when it was decided, and I want this for the record. I don't know when it was decided, who it was decided by, that one board member would represent all of us in asking all the candidates the same question.
So, no one said anything about one board member asking all the questions?
Oh, that's what you're saying, but that's not what I was told by Ms. Glassman.
Right. Ms. Vice President? Yes. Can we move forward? Yes. The four candidates are here. Right. They're prepared, and we're wasting their time. Yeah, absolutely. All right. All right, thank you. So let's start with Mr. DePaolo, Craig DePaolo. Mr. DePaolo, can you just say your name, address, and if you want to make a very, very brief opening statement?
Craig DePaolo, 1400 Block of Fourth Avenue. Glad to, thank you for hosting this, and thank you for everyone who put this together.
Okay, great. Ms. Ricks, would you like to ask the first question? Okay.
Good evening. Mr. DePaolo, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
How do you see yourself as a board member and the role that you would play as a board member?
How would I see myself in the role? Well, to set goals and directives, to understand and implement policy, to essentially, it would be a, it would be more of a legislative, it would be more legislative than it would be managerial. The focus should be on what needs to be done and not how it gets done. Questions, a rational basis should be applied to all yes and no questions, and promote achievement and success.
What specific skills would you bring to the board?
I currently, I hold a bachelor's degree in accounting. I currently, I'm currently employed as a union rep, a shop steward, at a maritime labor union. I have experience with CBAs. I, with that said, the, I noticed that the school budget is mostly comprised of, well, the school budget is mostly comprised of personnel costs, and that would be negotiated, well, that is tied with the CBAs of the unions. I have volunteer experience with the IRS. I prepared tax documents for underprivileged, well, underserved communities, and I also served, I also volunteered at the New York City Department of Investigations. I wanted to be active in auditing, so they, we audited small businesses that were flagged for fraud.
Mr. Rogers, you want to take the next question?
Mrs. DePaolo, what areas do you believe are district's greatest challenges, and what areas do you believe are most significant strengths?
Well, the challenges, finding and retaining good teachers, good talent, the budget crisis, the tax, the increasing tax on homeowners, the challenges with, well, the low scores, and the challenges with bringing people together to work towards one or the same goal. Strengths, this district has many strengths. One is the people, everyone here, the parents, the board, the teachers, anybody who's in this room right now paying attention, that is a strength. We're watching the, you know, the directives, that we're watching what's being decided for our children in this room, in this room, and I think that's a, I think that's a strength.
Dr. Penna, can you do the fourth question?
Okay. "In light of the serious issues facing our district, are you aware of the significant time, training, commitments, and ethics, law, and financial disclosures required for school board membership?"
Yes, ma'am.
"Please describe your understanding of what time, what your type of time commitments are, and you're willing and able to make on behalf of the board and the district."
I will be at 100%. I understand the commitment, the obligation if you're appointed as a board member. It's an important role to hold. There's training. I would, I would be active, I would enroll in training right away, mandatory and optional if available. I would familiarize myself with the bylaws. I would want to be appointed to a committee, and I would absolutely guarantee that I would be in full attendance to all meetings. I ran a campaign, I put my full effort into this last fall. You know, I want to be a part of the board, and I'm still here trying to be a part of the board, you know. In tribute.
Hold on, I got a question.
Yep, follow-up.
Yep, follow-up. It's a two-part question. What makes you want to be on Asbury Park's board, and also, what vision do you have for this district?
I've got the energy, I've got the time, I've got the passion. I love this town. I'm in love with Asbury Park, and I want to see it thrive in all aspects. It's thriving in real estate, in some neighborhoods, but not in others. It's thriving as a commercial beacon, but we're still, but it's just not fair. I want, I'm hoping that we can raise the bar for our, for this school so that kids get a fair shot in life. The world is very competitive. We're dealing with AI technology, and we just need to, you know, we're a part, we're a community here. Everybody needs a fair shot. My vision kind of ties into that. I would love to see all of those things come together.
Any other follow-up questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. DePaolo.
Thank you.
Okay, going in alphabetical order, duh-duh-duh-duh, we've got Ms. Kendall. Please state your name and address.
My name is Felia Kendall, and I'm a resident of Asbury Park at the 1200 block. Happy, thank you. Yeah. Got it.
Would you like to say a few words before we start the questions?
Uh, yes. I've, for people who know me, you may know that I was involved for a long time, then I gave it up, and like I just told somebody, unless you have a dog in the fight, I'm not one of those people who kind of do stuff. But in Asbury Park, I've got two, and they're in a fight, and to me, I just don't think they're getting the type of help that I want them to have to be able to, when they leave this 1.5 square mile area, that the world sees them and they're ready to handle it. No, I'm not, I don't think, I know they're not.
I know you know.
I know.
Thank you. Ms. Glassman, do you want to ask the first question?
Sure.
What do you see as the role of a school board member?
Okay, a school board member, as far as I'm concerned, I think collectively, they're supposed to, in my opinion, work as a, as a, the way I see it here, it's between the staff, the families, and the administration, but they're the people who are supposed to coordinate, and in my opinion, they're supposed to ask questions. They're not just supposed to, if somebody says jump, you don't automatically say ha-ha. You ask why, do I need to jump, and how far, and what's going to benefit me, et cetera, et cetera. I see the board as, like I said, a buffer between all different parties.
Mr. Remy, you want to ask the second question, please? Oh, okay, okay. So, is it okay?
All right, can I, can I ask my own question now?
We want to leave it to the, to the, to the end. We want to get through like each, each thing, but I'd be the first person I go to. Okay, Ms. Kendall.
Yes.
"What specific skills do you bring to the board?"
Uh, I think I bring a certain amount of familiarity because I've been around here for quite some time, so I know a lot of the families. And of course, I worked for this district for 30 years, one month and three days, so I have a working knowledge of what it has been at certain times and from what I see right now, and that, I witness, knowledge is absolutely invaluable.
Ms. Kendall?
Yes.
"What areas do you believe are district's greatest challenges, and what areas do you believe are our most significant strengths?"
What areas of what?
Basically, the challenges and strengths are we looking at. What are, what areas do you believe are the two?
Okay, I know for a fact the challenges are how well the students are prepared for the future. I know that a lot of things are done on standardized tests, and that may or may not be so great, but if that's what's being used, a standardized test, then our challenge is to do well on it, and I know for a fact that we don't do well on it if you place 436 out of 436, or 435 out of 435 in language arts. Those are the challenges, but I also know that when they work together, when, at least when everything's working together, like a machine, that these children in this district do not have to stay at the bottom or the end. I know they can rise, I've seen it. So their strengths are that they're trying, everybody's still trying, that's the strength, everybody's still trying.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks, would you like to ask the fourth question? Okay, just so anyone who didn't hear, Mrs. Ricks said that she was gonna pass on the questions because Mrs. Kendall is her next-door neighbor. Okay. I'll ask it. So, this is a pretty important one. One is kind of a yes or no, and then kind of the description. "So in light of the serious issues facing our district, are you aware of the significant time, training, commitments, ethics, law, and financial disclosures required for school board membership?"
No.
Okay. Well, can you describe your understanding and what type of time commitment you're willing and able to make on behalf of the board and the district?
Okay, since I am a retired person, I have the time. Your time could be my time, that's no problem, and as far as whatever rules and regulations, if y'all read them and understood them, I can read them and understand them too, because I understand, I can read, so that's no problem. I don't know what they are, but I can find out, and the time is no problem.
I appreciate...
Your time could be my time.
Appreciate your honesty. Mr. Remy, you got a follow-up question?
I feel as though you answered, so why you want to run, or why you want to be a board member, but what's your vision? What's your vision for this district?
Sweetheart, I really think, at least for me, I'm, are there any little children in here? No. I, I'm just a person who's like, I'm tired of like half, half-done stuff. I want it done, and I want it done to the best of your ability, everything can't be perfect, and I know that, but it can be better. But if it keeps going wrong, if it's keep being a factory that's turning out cars with square wheels, you either shut that factory down, or you get some people in there who work the factory to make wheels that go round on the car. Simple. That's what I, I know, at least I really, really want now, and because my children, at least, two of my children went to this district, that's why I'm saying I have a long history with Asbury Park. Two of my grandchildren are in this district right now, and I keep comparing because I also have a grandchild in another district that's really close by here, and I see the things that one of them does, and I see the things that the other two do, and I'm thinking, it's got to be better. It's got to be better. And, and, believe me, I know it's not one anything. It's not just the teachers not teaching, no, it's not just the parents not coming, it's not just the administration, Bo Gardner people, it's a whole lot of things, a whole lot of mixture, and I say, the board, if you, if the board works and the board... And I say, the board, if you, if the board works and the board works collectively, and especially in the best interest of the children in Asbury Park, I know they can be successful. I know they can. I have no doubt.
Any other follow-up questions? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kendall. Ms., uh, Ms. Maxu. Which I completely mispronounced.
Betty Ladder.
Ms. Maxu.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh.
I'm the only person that's step out.
Hi, my name is Dr. Shade Maxud. Um, thank you for having me here, giving me the opportunity to be here among you all. Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, do you have any opening statement or anything? Or if not
Yes. Um, my husband and I have been living in Asbury Park since 2011. I came to this country at 17 by myself for higher education and freedom. And I like to pay my dues for so many of our immigrant parents in our district and our town that don't know any better, don't have a role model. I've gone through that and I just want to be here to help. I have faith in our district, in our educators, in our children. I have a son in the system and I can't be any happier with the progress he has made. I want to be able to be an advocate for him and for the parents that are not aware of what we are offering to our children.
Great. Uh, Ms. Zinski, do you want to ask the first question?
Good evening.
Hi.
What do you see your role as a school board member?
I like to be an active listener for a while and just learn about my team's agenda and what they are offering. So I will be listening for a little while. We all come in with our own agenda and theory, so I wanted to see where the common grounds are and how I can participate, in what area I can participate the most. I am an MD, I'm a mom, I am from Asbury Park and this is my forever home. So whatever it takes, I will offer my time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rogers.
What specific skills would you bring to the board?
Critical thinking. I've been trained and worked in this area for over a decade. A great under pressure. I can perform many tasks at once. And I think I've been trained for this position in a different, in an indirect way.
Ms. Ricks.
Hi.
What area do you believe are our district's greatest challenges and our, uh, strength?
Greatest challenge, in my opinion, from what I have seen, is the curriculum policies that are not fully implemented. One of the greatest things about our district is our educators, how dedicated they are and how strong their foundations are. And I have full faith that with them, we can build and repair what's missing. We need our educators.
Okay. Yeah, just ask if I might have missed this, but what are our strengths?
Our educators, our dedicated educators. Day and night, they are working.
Continuing on that, that was our strength. What, what do you see as our greatest challenge?
Curriculum policies are not implemented, as I mentioned before.
Okay.
Okay. And that's my strength as a, as someone that has been in education for years and years, what it takes. I think there are work to do in that area, in my opinion.
Dr. Penna.
Hello.
Hi.
In light of the serious issues facing our district, are you aware of the significant time, training, commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
Absolutely.
Please describe your understanding of what type of time commitment you are willing and able to make on behalf of the board and district.
I am aware there are a lot of, um, training involved. As someone that has been trained as a physician, um, I am aware of what it takes to go through them and finish them and be able to execute them for educators and our children. I am dedicated to finish that as soon as I get a chance. You're welcome.
I think that's it. Do we have any follows?
No. What is your vision for this board and the children of this district?
I have a great vision. I, that's why I'm here. My vision is so clear because of just the last few months interacting with our educators and our children and how day and night, they're putting their time, safety, they're taking the time away from their own family and putting it for our children. I've seen that firsthand. I am so happy with the progress my son has been making. I want the same vision for other immigrant parents, other parents that are not aware of what our district is offering to their children. I want to be an advocate for other parents, um, be their voice because I knew I had help. And I've gone through that with my own personal life. And I knew what it takes to have higher education, better education. I want to be able to help other families to learn about that.
Okay. Uh, well, if you have a follow-up, go ahead. Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Passerini.
Hi.
Hi there. Name and address and if you have an opening statement.
Hi, my name's Natalie Passerini, 1113 Asbury Ave. Um, and let's get into it.
All right. Uh, Ms. Glassman.
Sorry. What do you see as the role of a school board member?
I see my role on the school board as a communicator and a relationship builder. That is what I have prided myself on in my entire career. I believe that creating and fostering genuine relationships between all of the stakeholders and working in a more collaborative and constructive environment is what is needed most right now. And that is how I see myself being a valuable member to the board.
You've got the vision, uh, question, right? Okay, so we'll save that for the end. Uh, I'll take this one. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
I have led a successful career as a marketing and communications leader for over 17 years. I think we could all agree, who have been here since 6:00 PM tonight, that certainly internal communications could use a little bit of a fluff and I would be happy to help with that. Additionally, I think it is incredibly important to continue to engage our community in the most effective and efficient way. Our internal communications are clearly broken and need to be done better, but our external communications with the community so they know what we're doing, they know what the plan is, they know the milestones that we're achieving together, is incredibly important. And that's something I would be happy to help with. Additionally, from a fiscal perspective, I personally oversee a $30 million P and L that I optimize on an annual basis and I would be happy to lend my eyes on the budget issues as well.
Any follow-ups? What areas do you believe are district's greatest challenges and are, and what areas do you believe are our most significant strengths?
Our greatest challenges, from my point of view, are from an academic success and a financial point of view. Our test scores are not where they need to be. Our resources and tools that we're providing for our students are not equipping them to be successful as people in the world outside of this town. And from a budget perspective, we all know what the numbers are. Enrollment is going down, taxes are going up. We need to figure out how to make these numbers work.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Passerini, in light of the serious issues facing our district, uh, are you aware of the significant time, training, commitments, ethics law, and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
No.
Okay.
Back to that communication issue.
Yeah. And please describe your understanding and what type of time commitment you are willing and able to make on behalf of the board and the district.
As I just said, I don't have that understanding. That being said, my time commitment, I'm happy to participate in as much training as is required, board meetings, committee meetings, and be an active member of this board. I have a very flexible schedule. Um, I might not be retired, um, but I'm happy to allot a majority of my time to the success of the kids of this town.
What is your vision, um, for this board and the children in this district?
I don't have a vision for the board per se. My vision is for the children of Asbury Park. We live in a town that's known for a tremendous amount of great things and academics is not one of them. My vision for the students of this district is that people, not only from all over this country, but all over this world, want to come to Asbury Park to find the talent for their companies and their organizations and make their places better. They want to come to Asbury Park to find the best and the brightest who have been equipped with the tools and resources to help the world be a better place.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. So why don't we make a motion to
Hold on, uh, uh, excuse me, can I, I'll make a comment. Right now, I want to, I want everyone in this room to give each of these people a hand because right now, what we're doing, unpaid position, and the fact that trying to make this district effective, and for anybody to volunteer, I think is, is, is well-reserved because this community needs as much help, as much love and energy to make it better. So I want to applaud, again, let's give them a round of applause. Mr. Rogers, I completely agree. I'll make a motion to go into executive to discuss manners of the new, the candidates and, um, we shall return in approximately, I'm saying, like 15 minutes.
Move it. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
Yes.
President Saunders?
Yes.
We're going into executive session?
I would like to have a motion to open up back the meeting. After close exec. Motion? Don't you have
Motion to Motion to
I would like to make a motion to resume public, the public meeting.
Move it. All in favor of opening up the, um, meeting? Aye. Any? You want to do a roll call? Okay. Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Zinski?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Vice President Grillo?
Here.
President Saunders?
Here.
Excuse me, can I make a motion to go back to exec for two minutes? Quit to, quit.
Mr. Remy, I respect your decision and I agree with it. May we move back for two more minutes.
In regards to what?
Of what we just discussed.
In regards to candidate, candidacy?
Yes. Two minutes.
You, you're talking about the candidacy, right?
Yes.
I think
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion.
I make a motion to table that because we did make a decision in executive session. So I would like to make a motion to table that.
Mr. Remy, just, I second it.
And I make a motion to table that because the board has made a decision and, I mean, it's up to the board, so make a second line and we'll have a vote and you decide whether you're going to go with it.
Ms. Zinski?
I made a motion to table your motion.
So because, because there's a motion to table, um, you, you, you would, uh, take that up to the extent there's a second? Um, so is there a second to, on the motion to table?
Second.
Okay, roll call? This is a motion to table to go back to executive for the candidacy only. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
That's to table the motion. Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
No.
Ms. Ricks?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Vice President Grillo?
Yes.
President Saunders? It's tied and that makes the motion fail.
No, that now is backed on the motion.
This is a yes means to go back into exec and no means not to. Ms. Glassman?
No.
Ms. Zinski?
No.
Dr. Penna?
No.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo? Mrs., I'm President Saunders.
Yes.
The motion is tied, so it's fail, so we stay here in public.
At this point, would anyone like to make a motion to appoint a candidate?
I would. I would like to move to appoint Shade Maxud to fill the vacancy on the board.
Who second the, um
Joe.
Okay, this motion is to appoint Dr. Maxud. Sorry. Okay, this motion is to appoint Dr. Maxud, sorry, I didn't say that correctly, as to fill the vacancy that currently exists on the Asbury Park Board of Education. Your yes vote would be for her to fill it, your no vote will be, um, not to. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo, Vice President Grillo?
Yes.
President Saunders?
What was the motion?
To appoint Dr. Maxud.
No.
The motion is carried. Congratulations, Dr. Maxud. At this time, I'll ask you to come to the podium to take the oath of office.
Thank you.
Please ra, please raise your right hand and read the oath of office that I just gave.
Thank you, everyone. I, I, Shade Maxud, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State of New Jersey, and I will bear real faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Shade Maxud, do solemnly swear, that I possess the qualification prescribed by law of the Office of Member of Board of Education. And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey NJ S 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, importantly, and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you so much.
Mr. President? Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Can I just, uh, make a, just point of personal privilege to say a couple of things?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to, to say, I wanted to echo what, what Tracy said before about thanking everybody who made the commitment. Personally, I, I was, I think I speak for everybody that were really impressed with, with, with everyone's answers and presentations. There's an election in November. Think about running. That's all. If you're really committed to it, definitely think about it. So that's all. Thank you.
At this point, we would like to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters. We should only be approximately, oh, 30? An hour? Or less.
I'll make a motion.
Second. So, um, just for purposes of clarity for the board members and for the public, the board is going to, once, uh, the, the roll call vote has been taken, the board is going to retire to executive session to discuss personnel matters, litigation, contracts, and to receive attorney-client advice.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski? Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
Yes.
President Saunders? We're going into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Max, Dr.?
Maxud.
Yes or no? Yes, thank you, I'm so sorry. We're retiring into executive session.
Roll call.
Just in here, the second, who seconded, um, I heard Ms. Ricks, thank you, Ms. Ricks. Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. This is to open the meeting. Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski? Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Mad.
Dr. Maxud.
Dr. Maxud. I'm so, I want to practice it, I'll make sure. Thank you. Vice President Grillo?
Here.
President Saunders?
Yes.
We have a call?
Yes.
I first want to apologize for the lengthy, um, time that we spent in closed exec. We had some issues that we needed to resolve and, um, there was some presentations that we needed to, um, have. In accordance with the provision of the open public meeting, okay, where are we?
I think we're on, uh, is it presentations tonight?
Okay.
Presentation.
Due to the elections this evening, we forego, um, the monthly presentations, but we will double up, um, next month.
Mr. Saunders, uh, would you want to go right to the public portion so we can have people get up since they've been waiting if they want to say something?
Okay. In accordance with the board policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters importance to provide members with a public, to provide members of the public the opportunity to express themselves on school matters, community interests. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to submit the public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliations unacceptable, if acceptable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in durations. Members of the public who do not follow foregoing rules and interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed. Members of the community came to address the following. Anyone who has a public comment, please stand there.
Felicia Simmons, 1034 St. Olive Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Sitting here, um, decades now, um, coming back and forth to these meetings, and I've only seen a few constants. The constants of ego play, the constants of things moving, the constants of internal or external fighting to keep things destabilized. It's a, a, a working tactic. I told someone outside, you know, insanity is expecting something different, right? After doing something over and over again, but consistency and, um, I can't find the right words because I'm tired, I've been here a long time, had a long day. Um, consistency after you see things work, like destabilization and gutting and all kinds of fighting and other things to, you know, distract, right? Because in the end, after all the ego play, after all the things that happens, who loses are the children. I, I sit and listen and I, I, I know what's on play as, you know, Bradley Obama's school is, um, going up, right? Now here's the thing, if you truly hate Asbury Park, you will truly continue that, that notion because it is encapsulated asbestos school. So if you go, you can't even drill in the walls because the whole school is a bomb. So when you go to destroy or to tear down, you literally kill the neighborhood. I mean dust, brown ground, right? Everybody over it, and that happens to be where all the little brown children pretty much live, right? So when you talk about things in history, I'm not just going to talk about the hundreds of years and the hundreds of thousands of dollars of history that is in the school and the artwork after I sit and listen to all the stories from Dr. West, who was the principal over there for millenniums, right? Just as somebody, right? Care is a curriculum. It's not about egos, it's not about people who sit up here because again, they play against those things, right? They sit and watch these things. I've watched it over and over again, right? I watched, okay, this, this year we're going to side with the superintendent so we can keep them fighting. And then this year, we're going to side with the, the residents to keep it fighting because it all happens. When y'all are destabilized and nobody says, hey, wait up a minute, right? There's nothing that ever happens but the gutting of the district. And I've watched many, many people gut this district, snatch out every dime. The high school looks the same as almost 20 something years ago when I graduated from it.
Thank you, Ms. Felicia, and we.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Here, Ms. Simmons, and we hear you. Is there anyone else? At this point, we're going to close the public participation portion of this meeting, and we're going to go to the, um, HIB report.
Good evening, everyone. For the Department of Student Services, for the month of January, there was one HIB. It was determined to be unfounded.
Superintendent's report as of next.
Uh, good evening, everyone, and welcome, Dr. Maxud. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, welcome on board. As you know, um, our attendance and, um, our enrollment data dashboards are, are in your presentations this evening. And so we are averaging about, roughly about 90% right now, um, coming back in over the last, um, month of December. So we had, um, just a few, few days, um, to be back, and we're working on improving that. We get daily, um, updates and we're, um, and our enrollment is pretty much steady. Um, and so that's where we are. We're starting our early childhood registration as well, um, and a few other announcements that are presently on our district website.
Thanks, Dr. Adams. Next will be the state managers' report.
Again, I'd like to echo, um, Dr. Adams, thank you very much for everybody being here. Because of the length of the meeting, I'll keep this pretty short. I want to thank everybody in the administration of the board that had the opportunity to meet and talk with to really get a detailed understanding of the current status of the school district. I plan to get out to every one of the school buildings, I get to plan to go to every one of your facilities. It's just been a little bit slower start than I wanted to, but I really do look forward to working with everybody in the future and anything that possibly I can do to help, you know, student achievement in the district. That's my bottom line as well. Thank you.
Next, um, we're going to, um, report from the committee chairs. You know what? We're going to read the resolution first and then we'll, um, have a report from the committee chairs. Sorry about that, guys.
Good evening. Um, I'm going to be reading a resolution, um, and at the conclusion of it, uh, to the extent there's a first and a second, please feel free to do so. This is for Board Member Recognition Month. Whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education is one of 581 local school districts, school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members who receive no remuneration for their services act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for schools. And whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators, such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores and the Preparation for College through Advanced Placement Offerings and SAT Assessments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs toward the advancement of our children's education. There's a motion and a second.
I'll move it.
Ms. Glassman? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers? Dr. Maxud?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
An easy vote, yes.
And President Saunders?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
President Saunders, if you have.
Okay, we're going to do committee.
Can I just, uh, I, I noticed on the agenda, we have a closed session, um, meeting minutes, we didn't receive them tonight. Can we, is there a way we can take that off the agenda for tonight and then?
Yeah, we could, um, we could definitely, um, table that until next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have, um, committee reports, um, we're going to start with finance.
Okay, the finance committee met Thursday evening. Dr. Simmons presented a snapshot revenue analysis of the district illustrating the critical financial condition of the district and the need for serious measures, uh, to reduce expenses and the need for additional state aid and additional revenue, uh, one of which was discussed in, in some detail, uh, which is this continued project to verify residents of students to assure that the, that funds are not leaving the district, uh, that are otherwise, um, inappropriate. We also discussed simple solutions such as not waiving, uh, facility fees, where we lose something like $60,000 a year by waiving, um, those fees. And that is on top of the, uh, the costs for the buildings and maintenance people, to clean those facilities before and after, uh, they're used by outside organizations. Unless we discuss the, uh, preliminary results of the financial audit of the district, which are clean.
Thanks.
Uh, so buildings and grounds, we, uh, we discussed, uh, with Dr. Simmons, a couple of issues, a couple of agenda items, um, that are pretty important. Uh, one is the building sale for the property on Second Avenue, um, which we're going to be, um, we're going to get a presentation, uh, next month, uh, on, to educate the board and the public on how school building sales, um, are accomplished. It's not just putting a for sale sign up and, um, we're going to, uh, discuss, uh, and ask as many questions as possible because we're all kind of in the same boat with this in terms of, I think there's only two, two people here that, uh, were in the middle of, of, uh, have, have experienced that, uh, any kind of property sale in the, in the district. Also, uh, okay, um, also, um, we spoke about the lease, uh, and I don't know if, Dr. Simmons, can you just give a brief kind of synopsis on the issue with the, uh, with the leasing of the, the building?
Sure. Um, currently, the, um, the building on 910 Fourth Avenue is being, our lease is up. Um, and at this time, as, um, most of you know, there's been discussions for a few years on where to, um, relocate the administrative offices to, um, based on conversation and, um, board discussion, um, a proposal, um, is, um, going to be presented to move the, um, administrative offices eventually to the Obama Building and also create, um, opportunities for revenue generation. Um, but the, and that process will come about through the sale of, um, possibly the maintenance building. Um, the hope is that that process that we'll start doing presentations on next month will, um, give us the money to do the minor, pretty much minor renovations to that building to at least make it, um, be able to occupy both the staff from the administrative building that's currently in 910, um, Fourth Avenue and the maintenance staff once we sell that building. Um, so the lease that we're asking for at this time is for, uh, 24 months to get that process going. Once we get the sale of the maintenance building, then those revenues will be used for the, um, um, the renovations for the Obama Building to then move the staff into there and then also prepare the building for other options in regards to making revenue on the other floors of that building. That presentation will start next month with, um, Mr. Adam Weiss giving us the, um, the regulations that are needed in order to sell the maintenance building, and then the hope is that those, um, revenues will then be decided by you as the board, how they'll then be, um, appropriated accordingly. So the extension is just for those, um, two years to sell and to renovate and then move the staff in. Currently, there's no funds, um, to do that, so that's why the sale of the building would be, um, the start of that process.
Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Simmons. We also, um, well, Dr. Simmons presented also the proposal from the architect to begin the design and construction of the tennis courts over at, at MLK, finally. Um, the fee is $25,000. It's on the agenda for approval. Um, I did, um, connect Dr. Simmons and, um, and Ivy, I'm sorry, and Ivy with Aaron, uh, from the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative because it was informed by me that the money has to be spent by June 1st, and right now the timeline shows, uh, that completion, uh, the completion would happen in August. Um, and I, I, you know, speaking for myself, uh, I don't know about the rest of us, but I could say that we want to find, at least in the, in the buildings, we talked about trying to have an, uh, uh, an accelerated timeline when it comes to this. Um, this is a, we can't look a gift horse in the mouth and they lose, they end up losing the money, uh, if it's not spent out by June 1st, and I think that would be, it's a reasonable time to build a couple tennis courts and have a really nice ribbon cutting for them, uh, in time for the summer for the kids. So, um, uh, I hope that Ivy, if you could call them tomorrow, like tomorrow morning on this.
He's going to email me everything tomorrow.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you.
And just, um, if I may, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that this is actually the second extension of time that the Tennis Initiative has been given because that money was supposed to have been spent.
Two years.
Probably about a year ago.
This is something from two years ago, and this is, this is something where, um, you know, I, I don't want something that's going to be so great for the kids to become an embarrassment, but let's try to get it for, you know, a ribbon cutting for the summer so the kids can enjoy it. Okay? So, and I think it's, it could be done without going to bid because there's co-ops, right? That, that, that.
Yeah, so yes, um, the architect had started looking at options and she did submit a couple of options for some components of it already, so she is on top of that. So hopefully, once we have this approval tonight, she could just continue to move on with that project.
Okay, great. Um, and then finally, we spoke about, um, the fields and the outdoor courts, uh, to start the discussion, uh, for pub, to have them for public use. Um, Dr. Simmons shared that the cost of maintaining the fields are costly and we don't collect enough revenue to continue to maintain the fields and open them up for public use. Um, but both Ms. Glassman and myself, we indicated that we could begin to work with the city of Asbury Park and possibly create a collaboration to have the kind of, uh, to collaborate and, and share the costs of maintaining the fields for public use, um, to be assumed by both entities, and I'm glad to see Deputy Mayor Quinn is here as well. But we can, we should start having those conversations with the city, and on top of that, we talked about scheduling the regular meetings with the city officials, so we can talk about that, along with other things where kind of the school district and the city intersect. Uh, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Grillo. Next is policy.
Uh, we had our meeting and there is nothing to report because there's no updates from Strauss Esme.
Mr. Remy Athletics? But Athletics is up next.
I don't think Athletics matters.
Okay.
President Saunders, can I just mention something in regards to Athletics? I went to the Boys Club for the, um, rowing, um, presentation that, um, Polly, what's Polly's last name?
Shul.
Shul. Shul presented. Uh, she had teammates from, uh, Monmouth University that do the crew, the rowing, and teammates from Rumsen Fairhaven and the Coats there also, and there's a few, there were quite a few kids that came to look at this film, uh, that is a story about a group of, uh, young black men that decided to take up crew and row, and, um, it's a moving, emotional, uh, movie, so I did not stay for it because I do not like to watch movies that make me cry, um, but I wanted to let everybody know, they do have a program, I think it's once a month, and, uh, young people in Asbury Park can go to the Boys Club. I don't know what the schedule is, I'm sure it's on their website, so if you know anybody that's interested in learning how to row, it's also very good for athletes, cross-training. Um, she did mention that a lot of football players, you know, professional, uh, sports players do row on the offseason to strengthen themselves and work their bodies, so, um, just check out the website of the Boys Club or give them a call if you know somebody that wants to participate in this, uh, program. I thought it was very nice.
Yes, may I add on to that, it's easier, it's easier to get a college scholarship, full college scholarship through rowing. So just keep that in mind.
Just on, just on that really quick, I'm sorry. Is there a possibility that we can bring rowing to the, to the high school?
What it is, um, Joe, is that, uh, they were able to get 10, uh, rowing machines donated from Monmouth University, so that's something that we, I know we had talked about in Athletics, uh, last year, a year and a half ago, but there wasn't any way to get equipment, and they're very, very expensive. I don't even want to say what the price is of each machine, so that was something that was hindering us, um, at that time. But she, they were able to, with the Boys Club, to, to make that connection and, and get that going, so I'm very happy for them.
Thank you. Um, next is curriculum and instruction.
I'm not the chair anymore.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Um, let's move on to acceptance of minutes.
Motion?
We need a motion to accept the minutes.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
These are just the regular minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's real close, just for the regular minutes. We'll, um, put the executive ones on the next agenda. Ms. Glassman?
Uh, I can only approve the reorg minutes.
Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Dr. Mansoud?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't there.
Um, I was, I mean, I was in the room, I was here.
Okay. No. And, um, Dr. Simmons?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was in the room, but I was not a member.
Um, there's no hard and fast rule. If you feel that the minutes did properly reflect the meeting, you could, you could vote.
Okay.
So, thank you. Um, and President Saunders?
Yes. Dr. Adams?
Good evening. Our expert consent agenda on all items, uh, with the exception of 2A and B1, all the way through B4, number 17.
I'll move it.
Second.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes on everything, but I'm abstaining from B1, uh, 1A.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I'm recusing myself from.
I'm recusing myself from B3, 9B. All others, yes. Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Abstain from everything.
Dr. Mansoud?
Can I be excused on this?
Yeah, you could abstain.
Abstain, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Grillo?
Yes, um, abstaining on, uh, 2ABCD, on B1.
Thank you. And President Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Simmons?
I move agenda item C1 through C11.
I'll move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Glassman?
I just have a question. Was there a, um, fee waiver on this for, uh, facilities use or not? I don't remember. I believe so, I'm looking for it now.
Yes.
Uh, there's, uh, the volleyball fee waiver, uh, number 10A on C4. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, this is for, um, C1 through 11. Ms. Glassman?
Yes, as to all except for no on C8.
Thank you. Ms. Lazinski?
Uh, yes on all except for 10A, the use of facilities are waiver.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Dr. Mansoud?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't there.
Um, I was, I mean, I was in the room, I was here.
Okay. No. And, um, Dr. Simmons?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was in the room, but I was not a member.
Um, there's no hard and fast rule. If you feel that the minutes did properly reflect the meeting, you could, you could vote.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yes.
And President Saunders?
Yes. Dr. Adams?
Good evening. Our expert consent agenda on all items, uh, with the exception of 2A and B1, all the way through B4, number 17.
I'll move it.
Second.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Dr. Mansoud?
Can I be excused on this?
Yeah, you could abstain.
Abstain, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Grillo?
Yes, um, abstaining on, uh, 2ABCD, on B1.
Thank you. And President Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Simmons?
I move agenda item C1 through C11.
I'll move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Glassman?
I just have a question. Was there a, um, fee waiver on this for, uh, facilities use or not? I don't remember. I believe so, I'm looking for it now.
Yes.
Uh, there's, uh, the volleyball fee waiver, uh, number 10A on C4. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, this is for, um, C1 through 11. Ms. Glassman?
Yes, as to all except for no on C8.
Thank you. Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Dr. Mansoud?
Yes.
Vice President Grillo?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't there.
Um, I was, I mean, I was in the room, I was here.
Okay. No. And, um, Dr. Simmons?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was in the room, but I was not a member.
Um, there's no hard and fast rule. If you feel that the minutes did properly reflect the meeting, you could, you could vote.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yes.
And President Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to close, uh, the meeting.
Before you make that motion, I just want to welcome Dr. Mansoud to the board. I look to working with you collaboratively, and if you have any questions that any, like the board will do anything that you need to be done as far as making your presentation to the board, um, easy, so you can make your motion, Ms. Lazinski.
Motion to...
About last.
On the results of the, um, votes?
I'm looking at it. I'm all pass, I believe, except for C10, which is, I have five no's on C10, which is the use of facilities, waiving all fees.
Okay.
All other items passed.
Can I make a motion to close this meeting?
Move it.
To adjourn it?
Move.
Second.
All right. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
You.